County Commissioners Meeting. This is a regular voting meeting for December 2nd. Here's your agenda. You can pause it, of course, if you need to, to look at any more detail. There you go. I understand we're gonna have a motion to set the millage a bit lower than 12. Depends on what comes up. Can you see? There you go. And there's your agenda. From your left to right. Alan Weaver, Brad Calhoun, Dana Whitten. She is the current chair. Joe Burgess, Nick Denham. Attorney Jamar Ship. And seated there toward a slightly off-center is county clerk Latrice Wilson. Ms. Whitten will remain the chair till January 1st. Then I don't know if she'll rotate out or not. Because she took it over mid-year after James Burgess resigned. So we shall see.
I spent all day trying to figure it out. And then one day it wasn't done.
All right, at six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Dan, would you do the indication, please?
The board has come before you in this season. We are mindful of the reason for this season. Doesn't matter when he was born, when he died, or when he came back. What matters is he's dead all three, and we thank you for it. Lord, we also thank you for the rain that our farmers needed. It was so appreciated. Continue to watch over them. Lord, those in public safety, we pray a hand of protection upon them. And as always, as this board meets, grant them the wisdom they need to make the right decisions in your sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, gentlemen, we have a motion to adopt the agenda with one change, to add Sheriff Hester as a speaker on managing his current funds. Do I have a motion to approve that agenda with that change?
Motion.
Your motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Drew, you're on there already.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November the 4th and November the 25th of 2025?
Sorry.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Public comments? Does anyone wish to make public comments? Sheriff recognizes Sarah Cook.
Thank you, ma'am chair. County Commissioners, I just wanted to come before you today. I've done some figuring. My house was reevaluated again this year. And I know you're talking about the millage rate for 2025, I mean for 2026. My house increased in value again by 16%. I was looking at it, and it had not been evaluated in 10 years. And it increased by 35%, which is probably about what it should have done, 3.5% every year for 10 years. This year increased by 16%. So when you're talking about the millage rate, it's not minimal for a lot of people. It's cumulative. My home value has increased by 57% in the past 24 months. And based on the projections at 12.75 mills, that means my tax burden has increased by 25% in 24 months. So even though you're not raising taxes countywide a lot, it is impacting individual property owners quite a bit. So please take that into consideration when you're doing your deliberations. And it's impacting people in disparate ways. I looked at Q Public and looked at your properties. Mr. Weaver, your property was reevaluated again, and it increased by 15.95%. Whereas, Mr. Calhoun, your property only increased by 10%. Mr. Denham, your father's former home only increased by 4.5%.
That's correct. That's not correct.
It increased from 521,000.
My evaluation doubled.
No, from 2024 to 2025. The newest numbers were just updated on that.
Well, when we did the evaluation, mine doubled.
Well, that was from 2023 to 2024. It went from 301 to 521.
I have a look at the number.
Yeah, but it's gone up again another 4.5%.
So that's 55%.
Yeah, it's up to 545,000 now. So they've done another round of reevaluations since the big eval last year.
Actually, they were the ones who knocked on my front door today.
Yeah, so mine went up 35% last year. It's gone up another 16% just this year. And I just want to let you know that every MLS website, every real estate website, Zillow, everything I can find says the housing market is cooling in Georgia. The average real estate market is down 2%. But the tax assessor is saying that our home values are increasing in double digits in Turner County. So we're really hot housing market, apparently. So when you're considering our tax rates, please take that into consideration. Also, please take that into consideration when you're dealing with the tax assessor, the tax assessment company. And the people that were reevaluated this year are not benefiting from FLOST that we just voted in. So even though they're only doing portions of the county every so many years, that means I'm bearing the burden of a higher tax rate because I was reevaluated in 2025 this year, in addition to the big one last year. The people that'll be reevaluated next year will benefit from FLOST, but I'm bearing a higher percentage because I've been reevaluated this year. So a portion of your constituents that have been reevaluated, including all four of those properties, Mr. Burgess, I didn't look at yours because you have several properties. I wasn't sure which one was your main one. But four of the five of y'all were reevaluated again for 2025. And y'all have all gotten somewhere between 4.5% to 16% increases in addition to the big increase last year. So y'all are also bearing the brunt of this decision. So that's a double impact. And like I said, a 57% increase in my home valuation. I'm here for the long term. I'm not planning on leaving. It's great if I want to sell my house right now that it's worth, you know, $100,000 more than it was two years ago. But I'm not going anywhere. So that just means that my tax burden is 25% more than it was two years ago. I'm not going anywhere. So that valuation is just a number on a piece of paper right now. When I retire, if I ever leave Turner County, that might be a good thing. But I just want y'all to keep that in mind. And keep in mind that, you know, while 1.5% looks like a small number, it's impacting people in different ways. And just keep that in mind. And just know that it's not just what y'all are doing, but that also impacts the county school taxes. It impacts the people in the city that have to pay city taxes. So they're getting a triple whammy because they've been evaluated twice now. And so they're getting that triple tax plus a double reevaluation. And then also, even though the ISO rating went down, which I'm thankful for, my insurance rates have gone up because my home valuation went up. My replacement value went up. So that canceled out the price break that I got on the homeowner's insurance because the replacement value on my home was higher. So those, you know, it's only $50 a mill, or it's only $40 a mill. But those add up. And so my escrow payment, my mortgage payment, has gone up $300 a month in the past 12 months, just because of those cumulative effects. So I just hope y'all take that into consideration and take it in the big picture, please. Thank y'all very much.
Is there anyone else?
Can I address one thing on hers? You said yours was, you said the whole county didn't get it. All residential property was reevaluated this year.
No, sir. No, sir, that was last year. That was in 2024. There was a new evaluation that just happened in 2025.
Yes.
Not all property. My parents' property was not reevaluated. I went through and I looked. Mr. Weaver, Mr. Calhoun, Ms. Whitten, and Mr. Denham's properties were reevaluated.
So all five of us was.
I didn't look at Mr. Burgess's. There were properties in Rebecca that were not. I spot checked because I wanted to see how the tax commissioner, if they did it by district.
He did the same, doesn't he? All residential property in the county was reevaluated again this year. All commercial property will be reevaluated next year. And then I think all, what's the third year? It's residential, commercial, maybe agricultural, is how it's done. Now, if he missed one, I don't know about that. But it was, he got paid. This was his plan, to do all residential. Because it would be unfair to do your house and not do Gary's house.
Okay, well, then I would recommend, then, that you think about it, that the residential people are paying more in property taxes this year because we don't benefit from FLOST as opposed to not having it for next year then.
Again, is there anyone else?
I didn't come to speak.
Sheriff recognizes Mr. Randy Hart.
And I'm not gonna go into what I've been through in property taxes. We're still on the black burner with the BOE, which stands for equalization. And that's why I'm having issues with this whole system. Where you say, maybe they didn't evaluate all, they missed one or something. I'm just gonna answer this, and then I'll shut up, because I can go on and on with this stuff. Trust me, I've talked with everybody from the top to the bottom. And I still haven't spoke to anybody that has tried to help me. And all I wanna know is how mine was reevaluated the first time? Yet I don't have an answer to that question today. I understand it's put into a software program. And I told Joe, putting stuff in software, that's a person. Third rung for error. My question to you, who's audit in this system? Who were the checks and balances in this system? I can tell you I've looked at less than 20 sites on Q Public. I can tell you two right now and show you both square footage on those houses are way wrong. One of them said correctly because I called the owner and told him. I said, "Now, you live in such a big house." The other one's got a lot less square footage than what he actually has. I'm not gonna tell you who it is. Somebody would be monitoring this thing. Somebody would be watching it. And when a person from the public who you are here to represent questions it, they shouldn't get to run around like I've got for two years and ask them a simple question. How was my home evaluated? And why are the other six houses around me evaluated at as much as $37 a square foot less than mine? Which is the same age house, but the same time period, same structure, same heating and air, sitting on the same property. Now, mind you, I didn't just look at Q Public and take the base number. I drilled down to the house with two extra land. I did away with all the extra fixtures, the covenant land. We won't even get into that discussion. Which is another misleading thing, why I didn't fill out an appeal to start with. Because when you sent out that first notice, you sent out a total for the reevaluation. You don't break it down. Land across the road from me sold for $8,800 a acre for 20 acres. I'm expecting my land value to go up. So when my evaluation came, it went up. I was okay with it. I figured my land couldn't go up. Uh-uh. The state says you can't go so far with covenant land. 15 acres of my land is in the covenant. That land values that tax on, that land went down. All of it was because of what you evaluated my house at. Now, had I known that from that first paper you sent, I would have been up there immediately. But it's misleading. It's misleading to the public with how you do it, how it's sent out. And then when you go to Q Public, unless you really get in there and dig, you can't compare apples to apples. I did. Every house around me that is similar in structure and size and all of its mine has as much as $12 a square foot up, less than mine. And all I want is somebody to run it in the program and tell me why. It doesn't work.
Is there anyone else?
I address that. Thank you. I don't know how it runs in a program. I can't, and I've told you that before. I did not know. We did not want to do a reevaluation. I promise you, there's not a single person on this board that wanted to do it. The state has forced us into that. And it cost us money to do it. I didn't like it.
When you go on and on, I'm telling you, Brett. You say the state forced you to do this. The state has been telling you for how long to do this? I had a supervisor at work have a plaque on his desk that said, "Pardon me, if you do your job in a timely and appropriate manner, does not constitute an emergency on my part." By the same way, I say the citizens of this county, this tax burden should not fall on the citizens of this county to the tune of, my tax went up 100%. My house payment went up $200 a month. That's from the last one. We hadn't got to the new one yet. My wife just got notice that her insurance going up 40%. And wait, the problem is, nobody cares. I've talked to 100 people. Not that many. But I've talked to at least eight, some multiple times on this thing. And I have yet to get anybody to sit down with me. It can't take long to put it in a computer program. If I did reevaluation on this whole county, how long did it take to put it in there? I work with computers. It don't take that long. Take a laptop or iPad and put it in and show me what the difference is. So the state has been mandating that this be done.
But we didn't need to.
And we sat on our heels, and we didn't do it.
We didn't need to do it because we was funding ourselves. We didn't need more money.
Yeah, you didn't do it either when property taxes went down. When property, I mean, when property values went down, we didn't reevaluate property.
We collected 3.75 million for years. Last year, after the reevaluation, we've only collected 3.4 million. We spent money and collected less money. There's still a little bit out there. If we hit 3.5 or 3.6, it's gonna be, we're gonna be lucky. Everybody says they paid more taxes. Apparently, somebody did not.
Well, I tried to call Ben because a article on the paper said the total revenue only went up 0.7%. If my taxes and her taxes and next taxes all went up over 50%, somebody got a tax break. You can't have a net increase of $65,000. And everybody that we talked to, taxes went up 50, 60, 70%. Mine went up 100.
The values.
Somebody got a break. And we know where it's at.
Right, so the values, so if you look back to 2020, we had a mill rate of 16. So you can't just look at the mill rate because you gotta look at the valuations of the property. So in the last three years, we projected to collect $200,000 more over the course of the last three years through these adjustments. Back in 2020, we were projected to bring in around 3.5 million dollars. Today, we're projecting, based on the 12.725 mill rate, we're projecting almost 3.8 million. So even though the millage rates have been going down, the property values have been going up. So we've been pulling in slightly more money. So that's the dilemma, is we're trying to balance and not grow our budget, grow our revenues, and keep, that's why we lowered the mill rate. That's why I suggested to make it 12 mills because that absorbs that little bit of growth. Because that gets distributed across everyone, right? $50 here, $100 there. Everybody's getting affected that we're reevaluating all those residential properties. So I don't disagree with you. I think there should be a way to look in the system and say, this is what we had you add prior to the reevaluation, and this is what we have you add today in terms of the things that were used to arrive at your property evaluation. So I would be happy to sit down with Joe and you and let's go through it. We can schedule an appointment. I'll be happy to do that with you. I don't think that that's a difficult thing to do.
You don't think?
How it spits through the computer system, I can't explain that to you. But I think we can start there and see what it tells us.
There are some anomalies in some areas in the system. I had one property that went up 373%. And me and Joe sat down and he was able to work back through it and figure out why it shouldn't have been that way. And he, I mean, but it, some of it's outrageous.
So.
Yeah, there's a lot of it that if you really dig, you can find.
So I would be happy to do that with you if you want to do that. You have my number. We'll schedule a time to sit down with Joe and have a conversation.
But we just passed the spot tax, right?
The FLOST. And FLOST is like lost, so it will be a rollback.
Basically, a million dollars that we shouldn't need collecting property taxes.
Right, it's a rollback, just like lost. It's intended to, so right now, the lost rolls back. So right now, our millage, total gross millage is 15.5912. The local option sales tax rolls that back 2.8662 mills, which gets us to the 12.725 this proposed. Obviously, I proposed something lower than that. But right now, the recommendation out of the tax assessor's office is 12.725. And that then translates into property revenue, property tax revenue. So people don't always understand. People, you know, think when you lower the mill that their property values, that the taxes are gonna go down. But it's connected to that valuation if your valuation goes up. So where you need to start is the valuation. And you obviously have some very legitimate questions that we need to address. And I'll be happy to sit down and do that with you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to our speakers. Mr. Drew Habey.
All right. I would say we're ready for two reasons. One, I came back in September and complained about some of the dirt roads and the county roads this month. Went on and on for a little while and wasted a lot of people's time probably. The next day, my dirt road was great. Two weeks later, my dirt road was great to get in in October. And then since then, three weeks later, it was great to get in in November. And I just want to say thank you. Appreciate the attention to the dirt roads. I think it was a, one of the things that I think is getting lost, though, is I've mentioned it twice about Zorn Road. I'm gonna add one to it, Snowbridge Road. Both of them have hanging trees, the canopy's hanging now. And it's just messing with our equipment every time we go through there. So I'm gonna, I'd like to give you this little piece of paper, just as a reminder, that I need those trees mulched so they're not scrubbing on all of our equipment, our semis and everything, as we go through there. But that's all right. Just so that you have a record, I can.
Be fine.
But like I said, I appreciate what y'all do with the dirt roads. And I'd just like the trees working on some so we can continue to pass through the dirt roads and, you know, conduct business. And that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Drew.
Our next speaker is Sheriff Hester.
I just wanted to, it wasn't on the agenda. And y'all talked about it in the workshop. I got to present in workshop. Just want to make sure that we, I didn't know if y'all needed to vote on it, or just okay, we're not ahead, or whatever. But just had the agreement still on those budgets for all of these purposes and stuff that I still manage those budgets. How long?
All right. Thank you. All right, new business. Consideration to approve setting the 2025 tax levy for maintenance and operation of county fairs at 12.725 mills or 12 mills. I make the motion that we set the millage rate at 12 mills. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Yes.
You can have some perspective.
We came after the motion. Unless you want to make a recommendation for lower than 12, then I'm open to that.
Okay. As y'all know, we all voted FLOST then. The way FLOST works is, is a property tax relief. The revenue generated by FLOST must be exclusively, must be used exclusively to order, to lower property tax mills and cannot be used for general operations or other projects. And we all know that's one cent on every dollar that comes out of people traveling on the interstate, stopping at Circle K or wherever. Those people pay most of the sales tax since we don't have shopping malls enough here. What I propose to do from the taxes, and I got it wrote down here. FLOST will generate approximately $600,000 per year to count as far. If we lower the millage rate to 11 mills, which is 1.7 less than recommended, it will be a $425,000 reduction of property tax and leave 175,000 left over to carry over to next year. That means we'll have approximately $775,000 to lower 2026 taxes. That being said, we're gonna start collecting the money the 1st of next month, January 1st. I say we go ahead and start lowering our property tax now, bring it to 11 mills. And we can, we'll be exactly where we are now as far as funding.
Yeah, like I said, I'm all for 11 mills. I would have said something lower, but I wasn't sure that I would get support to reduce millage at any rate.
Well, I think we need a little cushion there. That's the reason I said we'll have the 175,000 to carry over to next year. That way, if our collections do slow down or drop off or whatever, we've still got a $175,000 cushion to make up for.
Yeah, okay.
That's my, I don't want to put that forward with a motion if I can.
So let me withdraw my motion. So I withdraw my motion at 12 mills. And amend the motion to reflect 11 mills as due to the FLOST impact with the intent to use 425,000 in the coming fiscal year, tax year, with 175 carrying over to the next session, right? And I have a second.
Sure.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. I 100%, I want to lower taxes. I definitely want to lower range taxes.
That's okay.
When we lower taxes, we're gonna bring in 3 point, possibly 3.267 at 11 mills instead of 3.7. So that's $500,000 less that we're gonna bring in.
But we're gonna collect it back from FLOST.
Yes, we hope. We should, we should. Next year, we'll talk to our tax assessor. We can do it. You can do it, but you're gonna be funding it yourself. He's still gonna do the rollback based off his numbers. And whatever his numbers is, you're not gonna get any credit for it. You know what I'm saying? He's still gonna lower it. That won't be tax assessed till next year on the next reevaluation.
It'll be in the 2026.
Six.
But I think that the risk, given what impacted our citizens over the last two years through this reevaluation, and I agree with what Sarah said, we were missing our responsibilities not to do this in 2018. We shouldn't have done it then. And there are lots of, there are lots of reasons it didn't happen. It's done, even with where we're at. So this is our opportunity to take advantage of the decision the citizens made to pass FLOST, capitalize on it, and. capitalize on it, and I think it's worth the risk.
I think it is, too.
I I I really think it's worth the risk. We we have hammered our citizens the last two years. We are not a community that's growing. And a lot of our citizens that live in Turner County are on fixed incomes and or or families that are trying to make their mortgage payments. This does not make good sense for Turner County to keep raising our property taxes. And twelve point seven two five does that. It raises, it increases the revenues that we bring in.
It brings in, brings in the same amount.
It doesn't bring in the same amount. It's a it's a twenty-six thousand dollars, but over the last two years, we've raised revenues two hundred thousand dollars, Brad.
We we've actually grown.
But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, okay, so. Do you have any other comments before?
No, no, I just want to say that, listen, it, listen, it's gonna help me. I got a lot of more properties, some of them in here. So yeah, I'm gonna do good, not as much grew it going through there. But so, but I'm just saying, yes, we we can lower taxes. And this is what that will do.
And and.
But we have to operate the, we still have to operate the county.
Well, we might just have to tighten our belts a little bit over the next few months, right? We might have to tighten our belts. And I think it's worth the risk to tighten our belts and make some hard decisions. Yes, Floss doesn't really materialize in the millage rate until two thousand and twenty-six, but we're just leaning a little forward and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. So that said, all those in favor? I was pressing, the motion carries, eleven mills is what will be the new millage rate. All right. So item two, consider to approve and adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-five, twelve oh one, setting the two thousand and twenty-five tax levy for maintenance and operations at eleven mills for maintenance operations of public schools in Turner County at thirteen point eight six two mills for tax year two thousand and twenty-five and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the county to have a motion.
They they done sent theirs?
They sent theirs, thirteen eight six two.
Okay.
All right, a motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, three, consideration to approve MOU between the Board of Regents, so the University System of Georgia by and on behalf of the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension and Turner County for the provision of cooperative extension services and personnel in Turner County, Georgia, and authorize the chairs to sign an agreement on behalf of the county. Do I have a motion?
Okay.
A motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Item four, approve request, consider to approve request for additional funding for the VA's office.
Okay.
Okay, what amount are we approving?
Twenty thousand, I think, twenty.
What was the amount again?
The the total annual amount of this request, and we're gonna come back to you at 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 the end of the fiscal, would be thirty-six thousand. It's essentially three thousand dollars a month. So whatever the balance of that is for the fiscal year to begin January first.
Okay, so usually three thousand, so it's eighteen thousand dollars, right? For six months?
For six months.
Okay, so we're saying eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, you had December too.
Okay, so twenty-one, twenty-one for December.
Right.
Okay, so twenty-one. So we had our motion is second, understanding is twenty-one thousand, all those in favor? Any opposed? So the motion carries. Consideration to approve rebidding janitorial cleaning services for Turner County.
Motion.
Do I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
This is rebidding it and letting them go ahead.
Yeah, to try to, at the end of the day, we want to get the best price, but we want to open it up to more competition and possibly some local businesses will be able to compete that way. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, consideration to approve closing offices on Friday, the twentieth, December the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, and Friday, January second, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay.
A motion in a second.
What was their reason there on that?
So we have a motion in a second to approve this with the understanding that it's leave their vacation time. All right, any other comments? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. All right, consideration to change Tuesday, December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five work session to combine with Tuesday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-six regular monthly board meeting. Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Consideration to approve executive session minutes for the following Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay.
Motion in a second, all those, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, I'm abstaining. I wasn't in the discussion, so I don't know if in fact it was, the discussion was litigation.
That is true.
So I'm abstaining. Okay. All right, comments? So I'm, I am very, I just want to say thank you to board for looking at this millage rate and making a decision. I think it's the best citizens. Thank you for the suggestion, the creative option, Nick. I think that that, even though it's a little bit of a risk for the county, I think it's in the best interest of our citizens. So I am very happy with that. Have we got an update where we're at on any major, like Mercer Building, the roofs?
Not a lot from last week. The only thing that's changed is that for the first time in twenty years, they got a new president coming in.
Okay.
And there's gonna, it's gonna be a little bit of delay on their, on their end. We're still working with the MOU on it. I didn't want, I didn't want to spend any taxpayer money on the building or legal fees or anything until we actually closed on the property. And once we close on that, we know we got the money in our hand, then we can start working on it. And we'll review it second.
So how are we doing on the roof replacements?
I don't know. What, the closing is the eighth, isn't it? Correct, yeah, it's eighth.
So how are we doing with the evaluation of our roofs and getting the replace?
I haven't heard a word from those guys.
Sheriff, have they?
I was thinking about it this afternoon, I need to check.
They are, they are still in communication with ACCG for that update I got.
Okay, did they fix your leaks in the jail? They said they were gonna do that temp, at least to get some of the leaks temporarily fixed. Okay, could you check on that, please?
They maybe can't fix them till they get through with them.
Yeah, I just, I just know that that's an issue, so. Let, thank you, Nick, please let us know on that. And then the last thing is, I want to wish all of the citizens of Turner County, all the county employees, my fellow commissioners, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. To our first responders, please be safe and take care of yourselves. We want you home for the holidays. And to all of the, please keep the military that are away from their family at this time of year in your prayers. That's all I have for comments. Did you have anything to add? No, okay. Do we have any more public comments? No. Executive session, I don't believe we have any requirement for executive session that I'm aware of, Jake.
No.
No, okay. If there's no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Here, Nick. Yes, please, thank you.